Good evening. Thanks to you all for being here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
If you'll all will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Our mission statement, preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, on to recognitions. Dr. Monses.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is our favorite thing to do, I think, every month is to recognize some of our outstanding accomplishments as a district. And let me just say, first of all, it's been quite a, quite a fall to be a Panther here in Ray Peck. Uh, we've had such a tremendous fall with all of our activities. We're gonna recognize a couple of our outstanding teams this evening, but I first want to qualify that with, I've been in, I've been in more, at more cold weather games in the last three weeks. And the, I know the cross-country guys probably like it, but the rest of us are just cold, so. Uh, but it's great to be in that opportunity to be able to watch our kids perform at the highest level, and they've certainly done that this year. Our first team that we're gonna recognize is our state's second-place softball team. Let's give them a round of applause. I'm gonna call each one of them by name, and hopefully, I know not all of them could be here, but most of them are, and many of them earned individual awards as well, and so I'm gonna try to recognize those as we call them up, uh, this evening. But first of all, um, Natalie Bates, please come forward. Lexi Blackman. I will mention before, stay up here, we're gonna take a group picture. Hang on just a second. I have to, I have to read the recognitions here. So we're talking first-team all-conference, first-team all-district, first-team all-region, and all-state for Lexi. All right, we also have Aubrey Brown, who I believe could not be here this evening, but she was also second-team all-conference, all-district, and, um, all-region. Next up is Madison Busby. Next, we have Kirsten Finch, who is, uh, honorable mention, all-conference, first-team all-district, second-team all-region. We have Alexis Helzer. She has the big trophy. We have Laney Kilpak, who is all-conference, second-team, all-district, and all-region. Uh, Brooke Law, who was, um, all-conference honorable mention. We have Kate Lewis, who is second-team all-conference and first-team all-district. Caitlin McConville, who is second-team all-conference, first-team all-district, second-team all-region. We'll probably have to do two rows, ladies, if you wanna start organizing by height. That'd be okay. Next up is Izzy Messer. Oh, not here. Uh, no problem. And next up is Elizabeth Pace, who is honorable mention, all-district. We also have Haley Smooter. Cameron Stickle, who was all-conference, all-district, all-region, and first-team all-state. And finally, McKenna Wilson, also a member of the team. Did I miss anybody, Coach Brown? Coach Brown, please come join them as well. This'll be a little tricky. They have gotten well-practiced, smiling and posing. And in case you're keeping score, they also are in third place last year, right? So two-time, a final-four team, which is very outstanding, and I know you're gonna miss a lot of these seniors after they leave this year. So we wish them the best after this year as they move on into their, their, their next phase. Um, next up, I wanna recognize some of our cross-country athletes. Um, had a tremendous year there as well. First, I would like to invite up Marissa Dick for placing all, being all-state, placing fourth in the state cross-country meet. And I believe that's three times all-state, if I remember correctly. She's been here before. Pretty good fall. Homecoming queen, and all-state and cross-country. Not bad. And congratulations also to Coach Dudek. Thank you for being here and supporting the girls all season long. And I think this is maybe the first time this, uh, in my tenure here at the district that I've recognized a team as a team for first place in the state, and that is our boys' cross-country team. So let's give them a round of applause. As I call your name, please come forward. And I know the first person here is not with us this evening, Braden Zainer. Uh, he finished fourth overall in the meet as all-state, as a member of the team. He is with the journalism, uh, group in their national conference this week, so he is out of town. Uh, but next up is Marlon Williams, who at 25th place was also all-state as a member of the team. Next is Tyler Swift. Next up is Luke Volker. And Carson Eve. Josh Patterson. And Chase Cunningham. And if, uh, Coach Swift and Coach Shields, you wanna come join the team, congratulate them for such a great job of coaching the team. We may have to go. Let's do two rows. Let's do two rows. Luke, Luke knows. Luke knows. There you go. So as that race developed, it was quite amazing. After the first thousand meters, they were well down the rankings, and as the race went along, they just kept moving up, kept moving up, and then the last thousand meters passed who they needed to pass to, to be the overall state champions. I think they picked up fifteen or sixteen places in that overall in that last, uh, thousand meters, which. It was very exciting. All right, let's give them one more round of applause. All right. We have one more, uh, recognition we'd like to do this evening, and this is kind of a repeat of performance as well. Um, our finance department, for the fifth consecutive year, has earned the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. Um, it's a dedication to the hard work of putting together a budget document that has lots of information and detail to help explain not only the finances of the district, but a lot of the operations that it takes to support learning for our students. So at this time, I would like to invite up our finance staff. First is our CFO, Cindy Bias. Next is District Bookkeeper Cheryl Tipton. And Finance Specialist Pam Hicker. We want Cheryl to hold the plaque because some of you may or may not know that Cheryl's gonna be retiring here at the end of December after spending. After spending over twenty-five years in her role as District Bookkeeper. Yeah, give her a big round of applause. Every once in a while, we actually get her to talk even, so it's great, but she. Congratulations, ladies. Thanks for all the hard work that you do. And I wanna thank everybody for being here this evening. It goes without saying that there's tremendous amount of hard work, both during the season and the off-season, uh, for our student-athletes to be this well-prepared and do as well as they do. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears go into that, a lot of support from their parents for all the, uh, off-season work and in-season travel that goes with being a, a, a team member, and I think they made memories that'll last their whole lifetime. So let's give everybody one more round of applause. Thank you for being here this evening. Uh, as we transition to the rest of our agenda, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. You're welcome to go as well. So we'll give you just a minute to transition out.
Thank you, guys. It's always exciting to have so many students here. We've had so much excitement and, um, progress this summer, or this fall. Our students have done wonderful. So thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. On to public comments.
And then tonight.
Okay, thank you. On to informational items. Uh, school safety update. Dr. Brian Petten Gill, please.
Dr. Volker's gonna join. You'll get to hear from both of us this evening. Good evening.
On your time, right?
Very good.
He's already giving me straight instructions. I promise I'll try and follow him.
But obviously, it goes without saying that our student safety, our safety for our students, our staff, and our visitors is our highest priority, and nothing else that we do really comes into play if we can't provide a safe environment. So we have comprehensive, as you know from over the years, um, but we have comprehensive plans, regulations, policies, procedures, and tons of resources dedicated to securing our environment in our schools. The Secret Service, and we became aware, I believe Ruth, um, brought it to our attention, but the US Secret Service actually released an eight-step checklist in July of 2018, and it was brought to our attention to see if we missed anything in that process. Um, and the checklist, the actual checklist, is in board docs for your reference, so if you'd like to look through that. The eight steps, the recommended eight steps by the Secret Service that we're going to just briefly discuss tonight, and I should probably point out, we, we've put a lot of information in here, and we could do an hour presentation on twenty-five different components of this tonight, and we'll try to answer questions, but we will kinda just briefly, um, brevity's our friend on most, uh, many of these areas, but I want, I think it's important for you and our patrons to realize all the layers that we have in place. But the eight steps, and I'll just kinda read through them, that this, uh, tonight's presentation and just kinda outlining how we meet these, this checklist, um, establishing a multidisciplinary threat assessment team, uh, making sure we're defining our behaviors, establishing and providing training on central reporting system, determining the threshold for law enforcement intervention, establishing a threat assessment procedure, developing risk management options, create and promote a safe school climate, and finally, to provide the training for all of our stakeholders. So step one on that checklist was to establish a multidisciplinary threat assessment team. I'm gonna talk about the proactive side and then turn it over to Dr. Volker for the reactive side, but as we put together, um, we, we draw input from numerous teams, um, when we put together all of our different assessments and determining, um, the level of credibility of a threat. But just to name a fuel, a few, excuse me, um, that, we have a Safe Schools Task Force that meets monthly. Um, one of our board members, Bill Lowe, is on that team, um, in terms, in representing the Highway Patrol, but we also have representation from our Cass County Sheriff's Department and our local law enforcement partners in Peoria and Raymore. Last year, we put together a school safety advisory committee. That was a board-level committee that we gathered, we gave a bunch of information and gathered a lot of input. Um, just out of that, um, that's actually where Raptor really came through, um, that they came out of that group. Um, and then that was really the beginnings of what we ended up with Gaggle, that I'll talk about here in just a minute. The Mental Health Task Force came through a board-level committee that Dr. Volker leads, um, provides tons of information. That's obviously an area of focus. Uh, district leadership teams, in terms of our cabinet and everyone, we, obviously, safety is an ongoing agenda item. Our building safety teams, each school has their own building safety team that put, gets together and reviews all their procedures and makes sure they're up to par, and then obviously their policy and procedure, um, at the board level, um, and then all, down to handbooks. So.
Just briefly on our threat assessment protocol, uh, just so you're aware, it is a research-based protocol modeled after the Virginia model, was developed in 2001 at the University of Virginia, and that's why it's called the Virginia model, but we've been using that for a couple of years now. Our administrators are trained in that. Um, we use that to determine whether a, a threat is transient or a greater risk level. Um, it is something that really does help our administrators walk through the process, ask the right questions, be able to determine who they need to get involved, um, and really brings the process together in a very structured way. And it is a research-based model, and so that's why we went to that, um, going on two years now. So looking at defining behaviors, that starts at the board level with our board policies. As many things in a school system and school structures start at the board level with board policy, and defining behaviors and consequence structures, and also starts at that policy level. So we have board policy to do that. That really guides our handbook development. So in looking at our handbooks, you can go to each level. They're common across the levels. So our handbooks, the elementary level will be common, at the middle level, and then we have a secondary or high school, uh, handbook. Um, having one high school, you don't have to have that. It's common with itself. So looking at, we have a cons, common consequence matrix. Even within there, there are decisions that administrators have to make regarding discipline and their consequences. So at the billings where we have multiples, definitely at the middle school level, we've developed that common consequence matrix, so our principals and assistant principals can look and see what is appropriate and what is a consistent consequence for defined discipline behaviors. That's something we do review every year, make sure it's in line with board policy, and then we look to see if there are changes in specific consequences that we might need to make, um, based on student behaviors. You might have to increase consequences, or look at those things. We also have the BIS Continuum, that's Behavior Intervention Support Team. We've been using, using that. I've been BIS-trained for, I think, going on twenty-three years now. Uh, we use that to develop majors and minors, a lot of it at our lower levels, to determine how we're gonna respond in those situations, whether the classroom response or an administrative response. And then looking at conscious discipline, that's really a mindset, um, how we're engaging students appropriately. And this is something you have to practice and model within your billings at all times. Oh, one more. The next is looking at central reporting. We've been working on this a lot. This is obviously, school safety is extremely important. It has a lot of components. So what we've tried to do for our team is put everything in one location. So in tense situations, or if you need to find information quickly, we've developed a one-stop-shop resource document for our administrators, one for our counselors, so they can go, and we're gonna give a little more information on that, to one location to find it. We also have multiple ways to contact us, to reach us, to report, and then when we do report, we want clear and consistent structure and processes for our administrators to be able to use when they're taking those reports and they're gathering and they're investigating. In fact, with the bullying harassment form, I was just recently meeting with an NAACP representative and a Department of Justice, Justice representative, showing them our structured process, and they really believed it was one that they'd like us to share out with other school districts. So that makes you feel good, um, when the Department of Justice representative's telling you that. So that, that was a good thing. Crisis Prevention Institute, our CPI form, uh, that is in, um, a situation where you're gonna have to deal with a student that has, uh, might be instituted in some type of harm situation, could be violent. Usually, we're talking, talking about younger students in there. We have a very specific process, and it's very structured, and we do a lot of documentation and reporting in those situations. And then SIS, that's our Student Information System. That's how we compile all of our data. We put all our information in there, and that way we're able to use it and report back later and look at trends across all of these areas. I think it is Dr. Petten Gill. Okay.
One of the questions we'll get from our patrons and from the board from time to time, and it's, you know, we need to make sure they have a clear procedures in place on when we're gonna contact our law enforcement partners to include them, uh, in any type of discipline. So just a, a brief list of when we would call law enforcement, what that threshold is, is if they, obviously, if they're a danger to themselves or others. If we determine that, um, and one of the ways we really determine that is through the threat, threat assessment protocol that, that Dr. Volker was just discussing, it will go through and tell us how transient the threat really was. So that really guides us on at what point we're gonna include law enforcement. And then obviously, sometimes we're just legally required to report. Anything, anything that falls under the Safe Schools Act, um, would be a violation, that type of violation, we would be required by law to report to our law enforcement partners. And then obviously, all educators are mandated reporters. So anytime a child has been or is in danger of being harmed, by law, we have to include, we have to, we can, we call it a hotline, but report that to our law enforcement and Child Abuse Hotline.
Okay, I'm actually gonna show you some of the things that are included on our one-stop-shop now. Uh, looking at our one-stop-shop resources, I'm gonna skip down just a little bit to our clearly-defined threat assessment protocol. That's of course included on there. Our suicidal risk guidance, uh, threats of violence, what to do in those situations, high-needs intake, so we have a student that possibly is moving in to our district that has, um, uh, past incidents that we need to review, look at. We have a process to do that as well. Uh, we also have a return from hospitalization. So as we see mental health concerns grow in our society, we're seeing students return to us from, directly from hospitalization, what do we need to do to make sure we're taking care of those students, that they're transitioning back appropriately and we're supporting them? So we have a form for that on our one-stop-shop, and we also have a return from suspension process. We're really working hard, and we will continue to work hard to look at what we can do on the teaching side of consequences and behavior as well. Cause when you're creating a safe environment for all kids, you're talking about gaining skills as well. They've shown us through an action that they don't have that skill, or they struggle with that, and that's from pre-K to high school. What are we doing to help, to help teach that? So we're gonna work hard with that as well. We've got a crisis-go checklist. I think Dr. Petten Gill will actually talk a little more, more, more about that. Our signs of suicide, if we could go back just really quickly because I skipped it, our signs of suicide, sixth through twelfth grade, we're actually have just completed that process, and all of our sixth through twelfth grade, we'll be sharing more information concerning that. I think that has been very helpful and informative for our staff and our students and our parents. And then riding the waves, it's more counselor-driven at the fifth-grade level, and it really focuses on sources of stress and healthy ways to cope. So. Oh, keep going. So we've got, um, the threat assessment protocol. It's very step-by-step. It determines credibility. It guides our response. It tells us who and how to communicate with regarding that, regarding the, the incident, um, and it involves a lot of people. It involves our counselors, mental health professionals, administration, and law enforcement. So in those situations, we need that team, um, and it helps us determine how and when to involve that team as well. Cause you're looking at a threat situation, and we, we use this probably more necessarily than we need to, and we take this and walk it through, but we'd rather be overly cautious in these situations. So if we have a, some, a threat that might be at, you know, at the third-grade level, we might, we'll still go through our process. We'll ask the right questions, uh, knowing most likely that's gonna turn out to be a transient, not substantial, threat, um, but we still go through our process. So.
So as you look at your options, and this isn't just necessarily, I know in school safety, we think a lot about a bad guy coming into our schools, um, but a lot of times you also have to look at our mother nature threats to us, and if you think back at the Joplin disaster with tornadoes. Uh, so when we talk about risk management, we're not just talking about, um, an intruder. But on the proactive sides, when we develop our options, we do always go back to our board policy, and there's a reason we spend so much time on making sure those policies are aligned and are appropriate. Um, our safety plans and procedures, and that kinda ties back not only to intruders, but our, um, fire, tornado, earthquake, et cetera. We now have every exterior door of our facilities. Um, the, the rule is they have to be locked or supervised, um, a hundred percent of the time while school's in session. So we have, um, a FOB system to electronically monitor when, um, we get notifications if a door's left open for a significant amount of time in a lot of our areas. Dangerous behaviors in terms of going back to, um, the one-stop-shop and how to recognize dangerous behaviors and, and doing more trauma, uh, sensitive, sensitivity and informed training. And then obviously, when we're talking about our risk management, coming back to my, some of my areas on insurance as part of it, and then auditing, you know, what, what gets monitored gets done. So we wanna make sure that we are taking the time to test ourselves. So, and then if we do have a situation, um, I'll let Al talk a little bit about the reactive side.
So obviously, when you're talking about reactive on risk management, often there are consequences to actions, and you're talking about a dis, discipline policies and procedures that we enact as it goes back to our board policy and our handbooks. And then there are occasions where we have to make referrals. Referrals, we always contact parents. We have to make referrals to law enforcement in, in situations where the law's been violated. And then, of course, our mental health professionals, our, we make referrals to them from when our students that need support, and that process of, is designed to run through our school counselors. So our school counselors make those initial referrals. Now, of course, your administrators and your teachers that have concerns are always involved in speaking with school counselors, and then the parents are extremely involved in all of those conversations and decision-making. Uh, and then there, we have to talk about follow-through, and then we put reentry process. It's, once again, to stress, we have to continue to say, even in disciplined situations that involve suspensions, there are students who care greatly about them, and they're coming back to us. So what are we gonna do to make sure their reentry is smooth academically, socially, emotionally, all of those factors need to be considered. And then, as well as, yes, as well as safety. Um, so we're thinking about safety in this, often we, that reentry involves safety plans, specific actions, schedule adjustments, all sorts of things that we're considering on that, on that, uh, reentry plan. Well, a lot of this, um, we have talked for two, I guess, going on three years, honestly, regarding our trauma-sensitive initiative. Uh, we are looking and realizing that our students are coming to us with, with trauma. We all have trauma in our lives. Uh, the research and what it shows is that it can have a significant impact on all facets of life. And we, I talk about learning most, but realizing we have to work, and we are working with the whole child. So with that, uh, we are training our staff and continuing to train to understand how to respond appropriately. What tier-one, that's general supports, do all students need, and do we, can we enact to create a trauma-sensitive environment? And we are continuing trying to evaluate all of our structures, processes, and procedures to make sure that we are trauma-informed in our decision-making. And then looking through the, three other student surveys, Mecca activities, and student leadership teams are really about cl, um, climate and culture and feedback. So realizing, creating a safe environment, if your students feel involved, if your students feel like they have a voice, if your students feel safe and comfortable to talk to the adults involved, that's probably the best thing you can do to create a safe environment in school systems. Because if they're willing to come to you with their concerns and their problems, we'll be able to head big issues off before they occur.
Jumping back up, talk, speaking of student leadership teams, and I'm sorry if I leave anyone out. I know that Paul and Ruth and Billy joined me. We went and visited with student leadership teams at the high school and at both middle schools. Um, and as we're talking about, um, their involvement, they're the ones, they're, they're the only ones that can tell us how they feel and if they feel safe. And so we had great conversations from that, and we're able to utilize that data. That, that feedback we received from those student leadership teams was utilized during the, um, committee work that we had last year. So also looking through here, um, watchdogs is a program where we bring volunteers, um, after a background check into our elementary schools and use that to provide just additional supervision and just more adults in the, in the, in the schools. Gaggle is new this year. Uh, that's, what's a company we've partnered with. They utilize software to monitor and, uh, protect our kids through the communication, uh, methods. That's our entire Google platform, so email and Google Docs and Google Slides, and, and it's really monitoring for any, um, indicators of self-harm, threats, or pornography. Um, just one more way to protect our kids.
Our students really love Gaggle. I just wanted to tell you that.
Sometimes, sometimes it nitpicks a little bit when they're writing.
You might be a little bit nitpicky at times.
When they're, um, writing a paper about a sensitive topic, but it's okay. It's better safe than sorry.
Sorry. They say they've been gagged. Yes.
So. Raptor's a program we brought in mid-year last year at the elementaries, and we've such, since expanded that to all of our secondary schools where. expanded that to all of our secondary schools where every visitor that comes into our school gets an up-to-the-minute background check against sexual predator list. Obviously, we do not want individuals that may be a threat to the harm of our students in the building. Being highly critical there. Quick tip, a lot of our kids, especially at the middle school level, utilize that along with the contact versions on the website. I've got probably four today, just making us aware. And it goes to the principals, but I also get a copy of each of them to let me know when they feel they've been wronged or they've witnessed a bullying behavior, or they would like us to be aware of something and that's an awesome way for them to communicate with us. It allows them to be anonymous as well. And that's not just kids. Kids, I think I get more from kids, but parents still utilize that, or people that complain about a bus or other things. So we have three school resource officers.
Provide feedback about a bus.
Provide feedback, yes. We do have three school resource officers, one from Raymore, one from Peculiar, and one from Cass County that we partner with. We have three campus supervisors, one at each middle school and one at the high school. And then we highly encourage our police walkthroughs by our local departments and highway patrol, whoever if they're in the area, to just stop in and check on our students and do a walkthrough. Just the visibility is fantastic and so.
And just a quick reminder, a campus supervisor is a?
It's an unarmed security officer. So we have one at each middle school and then one on this campus that Mark Daring does with the security vehicle. He really does bring a lot to our security team and, I mean, he can tell you what, if any vehicle in this parking lot's out of place. And anytime I have a visitor that I'm meeting at the stadium or something and if they're there a minute ahead of me, they explain to me that they've had a visit from Mr. Daring, wanting to know why they were on our campus. So. Okay, talking about training, we obviously partner with Stratigos International. They do an ACERT training, which is our active shooter-intruder response training. Our staff go through very intensive. And when I say it's intense training, it's, we keep our fingers crossed every year to get through the training without an injury to one of our staff members or to one of the trainers. When they talk about how to fight back, some of them take them a little literally. But moving on, in the Crisis Go, it's an application that we utilize district-wide. All of our staff members have an app on their phone that has all of our checklist for each potential emergency. It's got building maps that show everything from door numbers to tornado rooms. So it's very nice. And then obviously where the real money comes in there is the alerts. It can send out, any of our staff members can send an alert that goes off like a siren to every other person at the app. They can choose their audience, what the alert is, and then, you know, what the emergency is and what their audience is. So they could send it to the whole district or just to a building. And again, that doesn't replace 911 and it doesn't replace anything else. It's just one more layer. Sorry, I told you we're going to cover quite a bit here. We obviously do our school safety drills. As I mentioned earlier, we have controlled access on all of our doors now, along with our CPR and AED certifications. So, that was quite a bit of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions if we touched on something you'd like some more information about.
I'd like to say thank you, you know, from the Security and Safety Task Force, we had, this is where this has kind of come from, because the discussion was, from a board level, what is it we need to know? You know, there's some of those things that can't be made public. And so from our perspective at a board level, what do we need to know we've done? And I was at a conference and a breakout session and they had just released this checklist. And so for me, it fit perfectly, you know, we can check, because I knew we did these things already, you know, I knew Dr. Petten Gill did them. But it just kind of put it in a checklist form for us to say that we've done our due diligence to make sure we're there as much as you can be. So thank you for putting all that together.
Sure.
So I will say that I know the process as far as getting into the buildings is followed pretty strictly because I was in the high school this week and a couple of times and each time, or not each time, the first time, I gave my license and I'm in full uniform, I'm signing in, I'm signing out. So the process at least is followed through regardless of who you are, if they know you, which is, I think, should be a priority for them, so they're not.
And just quickly, I know some of you, if not all of you, have heard the story when, as an assistant superintendent, my wife works at Stonegate Elementary and both of my children went through that building and I still have a child there, but making a delivery to Stonegate last, late last spring, and both my phones rang, my work phone and personal phone rang at the same time. One of them was Dr. Volker and one of them was Chief Zimmerman, so that's usually not a good sign. So I just stopped in the parking lot and was talking and as I worked through them, I noticed there was a, must have been a recess change or whatever. But what it was, was the recess monitor saw a truck they didn't recognize sitting out there, that had just stopped in the parking lot facing the playground, so they cleared the playground and called the police. And so.
Dr. Petten Gill.
And so it was me, but.
Take your safety seriously.
And it was interesting that they were like, we're so sorry. And I was like, that was fantastic. That was, that was great. So I appreciated them doing that.
I had a question. So on Raptor, which buildings is that in?
All 12 with students. We have 12 facilities that has students in them, so we have, well, we have 13 setups because for the academy building, we have Success Academy and then Raypack Academy at different entrances. So I have a Raptor system at both of them, at the high school, at both middle schools and all. So I, yes, seven K5s and a preschool, early childhood.
And is that used, like, if you're checking out a student or if you just come to drop something off?
The Raptor program is if you're coming into the building, if you're going to have exposure to our children or to our students. If you're in the office and not going beyond the office, we don't make you go through the process.
And then on the ACERT training, how oft, are we still rotating where it's the full training one year and then?
Yes, well, this year we had a.
Like every three years or something?
This year for substitute, we brought in ACERT training separately for an extended period for our substitutes and for our.
New staff.
For all new staff. So we brought in all new staff and especially this year when all the new positions we were able to add, that was a pretty big group. So we did training for sub and new staff on one day separately. And then they also then participated with the refresher course that was with all of our staff members, the 940 staff members.
I went through that our first year. Could you let us know when it's happening again? I think that is something that board members might find valuable. I might do.
I will be glad to do that.
And then I wanted to thank you all, you know, looking back over the past several years, the depth and breadth of what we've been adding. I mean, every year you all are pushing the envelope and taking us to a deeper and deeper level. And I think this presentation tonight shows that, you're right, any one of those bullets you all could have talked about for an hour. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill and Dr. Volker. All right, moving on to John T. Belcher Scholarship Committee.
So each year, we invite students to submit a request to be considered for the Belcher Scholarship offered by MSBA and the Future Builders. And so traditionally, we've still had three board members volunteer to be on the committee to review though, so I'll leave it up to you to help select the board.
I always volunteer. I like it. But I will let somebody else do it if we need to. It's just fun to read those. They usually have a topic that they all have to write about. So you just see some different viewpoints reading from the student's perspective on stuff.
I think I was on that last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I was too. I'll do it.
Okay. Me and Billy and.
I can do it again.
And Bill.
I'll do it again.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Consistency. Yeah, you want to be consistent.
All right, moving on to American Education Week.
We just wanted to have that on the agenda this evening to remind everybody that this is American Education Week. It's a celebration we do each year to honor all of our staff. You know, I think it's the National Education Association that kind of originated this recognition this time of year, but we like to include all of our staff in all of that. And we've taken them some treats around to the buildings. Hopefully they were appreciated. You bet.
Absolutely.
You bet. So, my car still smells like donuts, so. But anyhow, just a small token for all the hard work everybody puts in. There are so many things to celebrate. We had a few of those great celebrations tonight and I've got more to talk about in my comments later, but just wanted to recognize this for the whole community.
Absolutely. All right, on to action items, the October ridership. Dr. Petten Gill.
Clearly, our talented individuals getting recognized tonight didn't realize ridership report was coming up or they probably would have stayed around. With that being said, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does require that all scoreboard, scoreboards, if you have a football game this weekend, our Board of Education's approve the ridership each year in October and February. So for your review this evening is the October report for the 2019-20 school year. Just a couple of highlights that I wanted to talk about, and I know that's kind of hard to read there, but we have, looking at October report of 2018 versus October report of 2019, we have an additional 251 students that are regular riders on our, on our school buses. And that is due to the elimination of walk zones that the board approved and allowed us to move forward with. I've been really pleased with the way we were able to organize that. Out of those 251, it almost comes out exact numbers, not quite, but some quick math shows that we added, first I should probably say we have 43 K5 regular routes. So if you kind of keep in mind between our seven schools, seven elementary schools, and we have 43 regular bus routes. So on those, we were able to fit an additional 186 students onto the existing routes at no cost to the district. So with that being said, we did have to add two additional routes to take on 70 students. There's one at Eagle Glen and one at Raymore. We have a big group on Skyview that is within the mile, but, you know, they have a lot of students that live there, but when we eliminated the walk zone, that was an entire route just in itself, just to go through there. So that, able to do that at a great, without upsetting the apple cart completely. So I would be happy to answer any questions or specifics about our ridership report.
What kind of feedback have you had from the community for adding these?
So, I've had, I've seen some. I don't, it's not necessarily, people don't necessarily call when they're happy with things. So when we started really enforcing the state guidelines for walk zones, I had lots of feedback from that. So it was kind of nice when we were able to not withhold bus transportation from anyone. So from my office, I truly appreciate the board's support on that.
I've actually had a couple of other school districts notice and say, great job, now you're making us look bad. So.
I've had a couple of other of my peers.
Well, I think we're.
Let us know we put them in a bad spot.
Very happy that we can do that.
And I'll be honest, just to let you know, the reason we're able to do it at a nominal cost is because of our tier setup. The way our contract is written, the tier one is where the more expensive components, it's $215 approximately for a 71-passenger bus to do a tier one. So they do a high school or middle school route, and then once they drop off, then they go back out and do a tier two. The tier two route is much more affordable. It's in the 30s. It's only like $30 an extra route for a tier two.
That's per day. He's quoting.
Per day. So it's $30, and that's approximate, but it's about $30 per day plus fuel. So when you're looking at adding a high school route at $215, $220 per day, per route, it's not, it's affordable to add the additional elementary routes, which is what we were able to do to meet these needs.
And that was a part of a side effect of our reorganization that moved sixth grade to middle school, and that created more riders at the secondary level. That's driving the majority of our transportation costs because of their daily rates and adding those two additional elementary routes was probably in the $10,000 to $12,000 range is what we had to invest. And so that was, that was a good, good choice on your part, I think, to provide that for about 250 kids, so.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the October 2019 ridership report.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill. Board policies, Dr. Montzess.
All right. Got a fairly extensive list of board policies. This is the second reading. They were provided to you last month. Didn't have any questions in between, but I'd be glad to answer any that you might have this evening before approval if you happen to have any.
I would just like to say that I like what we did with the, with 4411, the professional development program, offering, I guess incentives for teachers participating and supervised practical experience. I think that'll be good for our students.
Yeah. We've already started exploring in the externship world and so now we're waiting for DESI to identify what they're going to consider worthwhile in terms of offering teachers potential credit eventually on a salary schedule, which till we see that, we're not sure what we're going to do. We need to wait for that guidance. So you'll probably see maybe some other version after we see that from DESI next summer.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion to approve the board policies? Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, guys. All right, committee reports. I know long-range facility planning has met, a lot of good discussion going on there. And then Team Raypack did not meet this month. Innovation meeting met yesterday. Lots of good discussion going on about middle school schedules, about the technology plan update that they're working on, and then about what, what assets can we build in for our kids while they're in high school that they will be able to graduate with some extra things besides just a diploma?
The Mental Health Task Force Committee met and really diving into the signs of suicide and next steps, kind of parcelling that out into what, three subgroups? Three subcommittees, three work groups. So a lot of good discussion, a lot of good work going on there.
You know, talking about these committees, I think that's just another opportunity for us to thank our administrators, that this is just one more thing on their plate, these committees. But they do a lot of really good work and we appreciate the work that the administrators and people have to put into these, so thank you.
So we did have a task force, safety task force meeting that I missed when I was working, so.
Working on safety.
But I was working on safety. But I think that a lot of those meetings were incorporated in what Dr. Petten Gill talked about and, you know, it's just, it's nice to have a community of law enforcement that's willing to support the school and just willing to be a part of the school and walk through as well as on the external, keeping everyone safe, just with suggestions of policies. So it's a great partnership to have.
All right.
I was unable to attend the wellness meeting, but they, this time of year, they always go through the maintain, don't gain for the holidays, so I know that program's going strong.
All right, if there's nothing else, superintendent's report.
Our APR was released a few weeks ago and tomorrow they are releasing the science scores. And so I'm happy to report that we've got overall very good science scores. That science assessments given in fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology, I believe, is the offerings there. So that's probably, if I had to guess, summarize it, it's probably our strongest area out of all the tested areas this year. So that's good news. That's really, again, the overall APR has to do with the efforts of staff, students alike, and support of parents. We talked a lot tonight already about our fall activities and they've gone just extremely well all across the board. You know, there's more recognition we're going to be bringing over the next couple of meetings yet because we've got more to come in that regard. And it's all of our activities, not just the athletics, but our performing arts as well, along with several other, other groups. Want to thank our students and staff for putting on the Third Annual STEAM Expo at the high school. That was a very interesting event, as it always is. Great display of our student work. I also want to thank our community for coming out to the Thanksgiving meals at the elementary level. Each year we serve close to 2,000 visitors and I believe tomorrow will be my sixth Thanksgiving lunch at Creekmore and we'll finish up the rotation then at that point. It's a good thing I like turkey and mashed potatoes, but that's all good. But it's great to see all the families come out and they really seem to enjoy it and the schools do such a good job hosting everyone. I want to invite everybody to Good Neighbor, Strong Community Saturday at Belton High School, starts at nine o'clock in the morning. I realize not everybody will be able to stay all day because they might want to attend another school activity at one o'clock Saturday afternoon, which would be the football game. So good luck to the Panthers on Saturday. Go Panthers.
Okay, Board of Education comments. I was able to attend the Veterans Event at Creekmore.